Probably will agree the one across the street is probably the most relevant and probably the largest, so for your sake you probably won't want to compare it to. So if I have the copies of the plans for that, I'll scan them and I'll send them to you so you can take a look at that.
Okay.
It may not be precise because of the roof may not be provided, but I'm sure you can get.
Trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you even designed the house across the street?
I did not.
Okay, I thought you did.
No.
One other thing, Dennis, who has somehow has internet access, I don't, has looked at your ARB code with respective decisions and a time limit. It provides where possible the board shall render its decision the same night of the hearing, however, where the board determines that it is impossible to render a decision the same night of the hearing, then it shall announce at the close of the public hearing when such a decision will be rendered by the board. So there's not a specific day that's dictated by this, is dictated by the circumstances. Consistent with the code, you ought to now make a determination of when you believe that a decision can be made, knowing that in fact you need some additional information from both the applicant as well as your consultants.
Okay, with that being said, do you need?
Barry, if you can get it in in two weeks, the information we need, then you can list it on your first meeting in April, then we'll delay things, that'll be April 3rd.
For the record, that's acceptable to us.
You're okay with that, April 3rd? So sure enough, the first item on the. So that's four weeks, four weeks? Board members, you're okay with the?
Yes.
The applicant is willing to go to April 3rd if we can make our decision, we'll have more information. Rich?
Yep.
Robert?
Yes.
Sandy? All right, so April 3rd, we're all in, go ahead Barry.
Submission date the same as normal, or?
He said in.
Submit in two weeks?
Two weeks.
I'll submit whenever I just want to.
Yeah.
Two weeks is the cutoff in the third, okay.
I mean.
Got it, we'll be there.
Okay, all right, so we'll make sure you're on the agenda for April 3rd. Shouldn't be any snowstorms by then, we should be good. All right, thank you gentlemen, have a good night. And thank you for the public who came out. Oh, excuse me.
Sorry.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, hold on applicant, what are we commenting on?
When you're going to do your calculations and submit them for volume, when you're comparing houses for an architectural review, whether the upstairs is finished or the upstairs is unfinished on the inside, almost really makes no difference. The mass of the house and its volume, comparing the one across the street to yours, it's the interior volume that's really causes the house to look big or not big. And if you have a 6,000 square foot second floor, but you only finish one side of it, it's still a 6,000 square foot finished floor. So I wouldn't, when you do the calculations, it really does, I don't think it's going to matter in the end how much of its interior finish is put in.
I was assuming it's an empty, for the sake of our calculator, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Silverstein slash Corporate Drive Review and Discuss Previously Approved Site Plan for an Office Building and Parking Lot to Include the Addition of Landscaping Set Properties Located at 14 Corporate Drive in Central Valley and is Known on the Village and Weary Tax Maps as Section 226 Block 1 Lot 88.
Jason Pitengaro, Pitengaro and Doche engineers, we're here tonight for Silverstein application. The applicant and representative are here with us as well tonight. We have been before the board a number of times before. The application is for reapproval of a site plan at 14 Corporate Drive. Originally, the app came before the board. There was a question as to whether the variances were still in effect. I think that at this point that has been addressed.
Adie? Rick has got them.
Well, at that time when we weren't sure of the status of the variances, we went back to the zoning board, and at that time we requested a modification of the variance. Because they said the variance was still in effect, they denied the application to modify the variance and increase the intensity of the application. We since have gotten same determination from Gary in the building department, and as well a determination that any below ground square footage for basement for storage area wouldn't count into the overall square footage of the building. So tonight what we're presenting is the, as far as layout goes, the exact same site plan, it's been approved a number of times previously. We actually went as far as to use a scanned image of the prior approval to demonstrate that there is no change in the application. The only things that have been changed on the application are those that the board's consultant made comments on, there's been landscaping added to the plan, there's been some modification of the inverts that were labeled, I'll just note that those were existing inverts. So those are the things that have been requested to be changed, we'll resubmit that so the board can review those items. But other than that, the application is wholly the same as the prior applications that were approved.
Thank you. For the record, February 1st, we received a memo from H2M. February 15th, we received a memo from NPNV, and on the 14th of January, the applicant put the submission in. With all that being said, with Jason's dialogue, I'm going to jump over to Dennis.
Testing. All right, there's not much, they went to the ZBA, they were denied, they're back with a plan that was previously approved. There was a question regarding the full basement and the structure that they proposed. We talked to Gary about this, we looked at the code ourselves, and Gary's opinion was that if the basement is used for storage of the tenants in the building on the upper floors, there would be no requirement for parking. And so, the only thing I would recommend is that you have something in your resolution that says that the basement should not look or act like an office, so that Gary doesn't have to do enforcement, that if it's going to be storage, it'd just be a typical storage. They can finish it, they want to put sheet rock up for fire protection, but they shouldn't have furniture lamps and make it look like an office. And so it should be just for that particular purpose. We did have a few other notes in here, there was some strange thing about the lot area that it changed, is there any reason for that, Jason?
No, it was just incorrectly stated, we've corrected that, and you'll see that on the resubmitted plans which we'll make in the future.
Okay, and on the building height, there's no relief being granted. I don't know that we have an ARB for this, I don't recall.
No, the architecturals haven't been submitted, but they're the exact architecturals, since we haven't changed anything that were previously provided, so we could provide those to the board as well.
Okay, we should conclude that all if possible, and then we'll just confirm with that, that it's 34 feet. We made a few other comments on a few details, I don't think I need to go over that, I think you can modify the plans. That's all I have. I'll leave questions.
Thank you. Jonathan? See if your microphone works, we have an extra one up here for some reason.
In our memorandum on February 15th, we made some comments on landscaping, I'll just jump right to those. No specifics on landscaping have been provided yet, we'll need a landscape plan with sizes and species of trees and shrubs. 310-27C2 requires a street tree every 40 feet along the frontage, and there are some tree symbols there, but we need to know that the size meets the code. Section 27C3 requires landscaping in the first 25 feet of depth along the front lot line, and a five-foot deep landscape bed along the front of the building foundation, and we would need details on that. And then 27D requires interior parking lot islands with some codes on sizes of plants in those islands. And it doesn't appear that the variances that have been given by ZBA gave them a pass on any of these landscaping details. However, the ZBA did approve the pattern of the parking. And I know that you took the previous plan and sort of superimposed it with the new plan, but probably the clearer way to do it is just to show a separate plan sheet with the approval that has the dates, and we can tell that it's the original ZBA approved plan, and then your plan would be fresh. Because when you superimpose the old plan, it was a little hard to read some of the lines and some of the contrast wasn't that, wasn't that good. So we'd appreciate that change. And as Dennis mentioned, this will require ARB. And there is a code in LC District that rooftop equipment be shielded, and that's one of the special standards, so we'll look at that. And we appreciate that the sidewalk is going to be extended across the frontage of 14 Corporate Drive. That hadn't been on a previous plan, and we appreciate that.
Anything else? You're good?
Yes.
Rick?
Just two things. One, the board has gone ahead and declared it's a tend-to-be lead agency, the action is unlisted. I believe the board should go ahead and assume lead agency status this evening. We will prepare our two EAF for the board's determination, and then you can make a determination of significance based upon that.
Okay, thank you. Chris? Any concerns, questions?
I don't have anything for the applicant right now.
Rich?
I'm good.
Robert?
Jason, what is the actual height of the building? Dennis made a comment on that, that the original approval was 34 feet, and then on your sketch you have 35?
The maximum is 35 feet, I'll verify the actual height of the building, it would be the same as was previously proposed, but it'll be demonstrated on the architecturals, and we'll provide those to the board for their review. It'll certainly be within the 35 feet, and in regards to that landscape, we're not seeking any further relief on any of those items.
Sandy?
Okay, the parking, Jonathan, you said the parking was all approved? This parking was all previously approved?
Yep.
Okay, so we can't even talk about parking?
There are standards in LC that say parking is supposed to be not in the front of the building and on the side and so forth, so I didn't really comment on those because part of the variance approval for the original building was this parking pattern. So I think that the, where the parking is and its placement on the lot was covered by variance, but I don't believe the landscaping installations, that there wasn't any record in the variance proceedings that the ZBA said you don't have to have street trees or you don't have to have foundation plantings.
Okay, because this is one way in and one way out, it's just one way all the way around, right? Because that first parking space right behind the building, this one in the corner, if someone's backing out of there and somebody else is coming around, how are they possibly supposed to see that?
They're backing into an aisle, they'll, just like backing into any aisle and any traveled way in any parking area, whether it's one-way or two-way.
Not so much the person that's backing up, the person that's coming around, that lower left corner of the building.
Are you referring to this area here? So seeing people coming direction, if the driver is here and they're backing up, they can, there's no obstruction to their view from where they're looking.
So on that, whatever you've got, curb right there, there's not going to be any vegetation, nothing is going to be there?
There could be landscaping there, we're not proposing any, but as John will tell you, the landscaping in the islands is probably limited in height, the landscaping which you see over, I think that's a standard practice.
Because it's like where everything comes together there, across from that way is the dumpster, correct?
Behind there is dumpster, yes.
So, in a perfect storm, I mean if the dumps, if the garbage truck is there, somebody's, people are trying to back up, and that one way is coming around, it just seems like it's going to be clogged up there, but if this.
If the garbage truck is there, you're not going to be able to pass, that's correct, but that would be a time, and I think it would be pretty evident that the garbage truck is there.
All right, but this configuration you said was approved already?
Yeah, and.
If it was there, it was approved.
Okay, all right. The proposed usage of the building is all office space without medical, dental, or retail, correct?
It's limited office space, medical, dental, and retail.
Okay. Okay, the operating hours are 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, okay, and then number six, should that be village code in the last sentence?
For instance, Dennis always asks, change it to village, changed on this plan, which is not submitted because it's been a number of weeks, but it will be submitted.
It was requested not to keep making new plans with Dennis's memos, once they come to get everything all together, it'll all be correct. That was request of the engineer, so we wouldn't have multiple maps. Anything else? As we've all been saying, you know, we went through great pains when we did approve this, and I'm thank you for keeping it the same way. So you're going to submit, so we, for ARB approval, you'll give us samples and you'll fill out the proper form. Do we need to have elevations, Dennis, of all four sides and the height, right?
Yes, that's typical in your ARB, the materials, construction, the elevation views of the structure. I did back in the previous.
And it does make reference to prior plans that were submitted for ARB.
Landscape plan, so we're looking at elevations, ARB submission, landscape. I'm just going to ask where the concrete block dumpster enclosure, it's three walls of concrete block, is that, because that's what's written on here? And then one of the pages says chain link, which, what are we doing here? Because I don't recall doing chain link.
Yes, so memo references as well. Again, it has not been resubmitted, but it has been changed on the plan. The plan now, plan view shows the concrete block dumpster enclosure, and the details now match that.
Okay.
So what you see when we resubmit will include that, and it has enclosure doors along the front.
Okay. The only thing is with some of the landscaping, and just because I remember this application with the neighbor next door, where the road curves, the concrete curb, where behind the handicap spots, I don't see any landscaping there on this, what we have tonight. So if you can address that with your landscaping plan, I think that'd be advantageous for everyone, the neighbor and you, to put something in there. Dennis, being that this is a two-story office building, accessibility with, I know this is not our, elevator, handicap, what?
That depends on the size of the building and the requirements. If it's a certain size, it doesn't require an elevator. You had that with CV properties, remember? They said they didn't want to have that, and they weren't required to do it. That's a building department function, and they'll have to apply the code.
All right.
And just to respond to what you were saying earlier, landscaping is required in between all the street trees along the entire frontage, and it's all the frontage, because the road wraps around, so all that, that whole curve needs to be landscaped between the street trees.
Yeah, on Turner Road, I guess, you know what you have to do with the landscaping.
Yeah, we've actually included it already, so you'll, it'll be on the submission.
Okay. My other thought now. Elevations, RV, landscaping. Dennis, being that we did approve this eons ago, we had ESO go through there, do we have to talk to them again? Because I know all these.
I think that's up to you. If you think you have the reasonable input and there's no change, and you have, you know, you have new board members, it's up to you whether you want to refer it over again or accept the comments you had previously.
Because I think previously, that's why the road was designed to where it is currently is because the fire truck can move around within, but I'm not 100% sure because I don't have that particular application in front of me.
I don't recall. I could take a look and see if we had minutes, generally when we have an ESO meeting, I provide minutes to the board. I'll see if I have those around.
All right, so if you can check on that, that'd be correct.
Are you referring to, I missed a little bit of that, the internal road, or?
Internally, around the building.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that the turning radius is, I'm.
Yeah, my belief is that the fire truck is not going to enter into that area. The building is quite close to the road from all the sides, and he'd be trapped between the, you know, the Corporate Drive and the existing house that's in there, so I don't think we're going to enter into that.
Okay, but if Dennis can look that up, just to be, because like I said, it's been a while since this was before us. With all that being said, so then, once you get everything in, I guess we can move to public hearing, or am I missing a step here?
Well, if the applicant could give us a date certain by when they would have this material in, schedule a public hearing. If they have scoured out materials and figure out, you know, when they can submit, then do your best to submit it, and then the board can schedule a public hearing after that.
So we've made all revisions we could submit as early as Friday this week. Is it, is there any chance that the public hearing could be waived? Its application is again substantial?
Attorney said no. Rick, I'm looking at the outside of my folder here, when they were before us, July 18, 2018, with the prior plan that they gave us, we said intend to be lead agency listed on action on July 18th, we have to review that, we have to redo it again.
You said that we did it on July 18th?
Yeah, on July 18, 2018, I made a motion to be lead agency, Sandy seconded it, we made it an enlisted action, I said it.
I think that was a notice of intent.
It says, no, it says lead agency.
Well, there was, it was needed to be referred to the ZBA, so there would have been more than one involved agency, so you would have had to have done a notice of intent, and I believe that's what it was on July 18th.
All right, so we just have to make determination that we are lead agency.
Yeah, you assume lead agency this evening.
Assume it, all right.
And just as a comment back to Jason, there's just no provision for a waiver, and so the board is just bound that it needs to have a public hearing.
Understood.
All right, so I'm going to offer a motion that we are the lead agency on this application, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion that we declare it's an enlisted action, or do we need to wait? Because you have to wait, we have to wait, we did that already. So you're going to prepare the part two?
Yes.
You're going to do elevations, ARB, landscape. Anything else? We're good?
So can we set the public hearing? We're prepared to resubmit, again, so the architecturals again are already completed because they're no different than they were before?
We don't, does the board want to see the ARB or at the night of the hearing? We don't need to have them come back again, right? We'll see everything that.
Right, yeah.
All right.
April 3rd, I think would be the earliest, they would have to get it in by the 20th, two weeks?
Sure.
If they get it in on the 20th, then you can schedule it for April 3rd.
All right. I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for April 3rd.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm also going to make a motion that we authorize the attorney to draft a resolution of approval for this application. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Okay, thank you, good evening.
You're welcome, have a good night. Just a second, Solar Energy is going to be next, let me get my file together here. Next item on the agenda is Solar Liberty, Discuss Proposed Placement of Rooftop Solar Panels at the Life Storage Building. Set property is located at 97 Meyer Lane and is known on the Village and Weary Tax Maps as Section 225 Block 1 Lot 40. Let me just get my folder, just give me a second. For the record, we have a memo dated February 15, H2M. And we're, from what I read on the letter, you submitted the package, it was revoked scheduling, but these minor changes are, all right. So we had the original plans were submitted to us, Rick at the time says not eligible by applicant, why do I have not eligible by applicant contact SHPO? Why do I have that written in here? Any idea? Type 2 action, public hearing, another night. This is from January, any idea why we have that written?
Well, it was, it's now a type 2 action under the present SECA regulations, revised SECA regulations. Previously, it would have been a type 2 action. However, if there is a determination by SHPO that it is on the national state register, then that typing is going to change.
Okay.
So we need a determination from SHPO, so the applicant should request from SHPO whether or not, or provide proof that it's not on the national or state register. Usually the easiest way to do that is to contact them for their opinion.
Okay, thank you.
There's also a website you can check called CRIS that has a, that the state operates that you can.
You have to register on it and fill it out, and you can get a determination, then you can get that.
Okay. I just wanted to go over my notes. Please state your name for the record and give us a brief overview of what you are planning to do.
My name is.
You can take the microphone out of there.
Good luck.
It's on, it was on. Gail's, Gail, is yours on?
It's not a baby, you don't.
Yeah, don't. It's, just give, use, use that one, please.
Thank you.
I'm going to talk to.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is John Wagner, I'm representing Solar Liberty, and we are constructing a rooftop system on Life Storage over 97 Meyer Lane. It's going to be a 92.40 KW system, and just getting quickly back to the SHPO, we did submit, oh, no impact, so.
Did you provide proof to us?
Yes, I have this right here.
All right, tomorrow?
Submit it to the building.
Will do.
Submit it to the building department, so she make copies and give it to everybody.
Okay, of course. And so, yeah, that's really it, cut it dry. I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have and provide any information that I have on me.
Okay, I'm going to defer to Dennis, is this for the new storage facility that was just recently built, or is this for the old structures that are around?
This is for the new, the new portion.
The new, okay, the one that's self-contained?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Dennis?
Okay, well, the zoning code allows these uses, and it provides specific requirements similar to wireless law where you have a set of criteria that's different than most of the criteria for development in the town.
We sent you a copy of the memo. I don't know if our memo, I don't know if it reached you, John?
Uh, what memo is that?
Okay, this is one from H2M. And it's regarding, it's stated February 13th and it's regarding this application. It's, I think, four pages in length. In any event, what it includes is it runs through the criteria that's in the code. And a number of these things require that you certify that the application complies because it's specific to the equipment that you're using. All solar collecting installations must be performed by a qualified solar installer. And if you're going to do that, you simply have to provide some written documentation to the board noting compliance, noting compliance with all the criteria. It can be, most of it probably take the form of a certification and some of it will work itself into the resolution because there'll need to be things that are confirmed by the building department. There are, I really don't know if the board, if it's worthwhile for the board to go through these items simply because they are technical in nature, they're requiring certifications by the applicant. There are a number of miscellaneous items though that are not within the code necessarily, but there are review of the plans. It says an installation detail should be provided for bollards. But I don't know, do you have additional bollards? Is that from the old drawings?
I do have some updated drawings that show some Ballard design.
Okay.
I can present it to the board if you guys would like.
All right, and the applicant should confirm if any other site improvements are proposed, including landscaping, we'll refer to MPV. But if there's anything in landscaping or, we asked for some modifications to the location plan on the cover sheet to show the location of the proposed improvement. And I think we had the wrong location shown. And one item I would like to discuss with the board, with advice from Rick on this, is similar to your wireless law where people erect things and there may be concern in the future about its viability, whether it's safe. You keep a bond on the wireless facility so that it can be disassembled. In this particular case, I don't know who owns the panels. Is it the property owner or is it somebody else that owns the panels?
This is going to be the property owner who will own the panels.
Okay. Well, that may be some information, but we had suggested here you consider whether bonding would be required. The only concern that I have is that the panels go into disrepair. They're affixed to the roof. If for some reason there was financial issues with this and it wasn't removed, it could create an unsafe condition. I think that would depend upon the installation itself. And advice from council as to whether it's appropriate to do it. But I just, that's one item that's not specifically within the code as it is in the wireless law, but it may be something you want to consider. Do you have other installations like this on similar roofs?
Uh, yes, yeah, absolutely. We use the S5 clamps on a lot of these, especially these storage facilities because they're all mostly flat roofs with ribs. And the ribs are, the ribs are so tall that they have, the clamp we use actually pinches into the rib. It does not pierce the roof. It's very, very common on storage facilities because they're typically built like this.
All right, we haven't had many of these. And that's why I don't have a definitive opinion on bonding other than that I think it's something we should consider just to make, and unless the applicant can provide something further that would allay any concerns about that. I just have concerns about whether they would be removed if they fall into disrepair. It's simply out of sight, out of mind. I don't know what the property owner would do. We get high winds, we get hurricanes. I don't want to have a problem with these.
Just a quick question. On the picture you submitted, it said similar site. Is it located within Orange County? Or that you have the roof picture? You might be going to the prior-
I do not have those pictures. Apologize.
Because this may have been from, was first submitted to us.
Okay.
Because it says similar. It's not date stamped, I don't know why. All right. I was just curious if you had any other facilities that you've done within Orange County with this?
We may. I'll be honest with you. I'm not, I'm not familiar with the area so I don't know the boundaries of Orange County.
Okay.
If, offhand, if you guys could tell me if Middletown is part of Orange County?
Yes, it is.
If it is, we just completed a system over there in Middletown, another Life Storage Facility.
Okay.
I don't have any pictures to show you at this time, but I'm sure we could submit some of that finished product.
That might be helpful.
Absolutely.
For the board to see it, being that this is the first time that we're doing this. That'd be great. So Middletown, yes, is in Orange County.
Absolutely, will do.
All right, Dennis, anything else?
No.
Rick, thoughts, concerns?
Yes.
One, with respect to the Middletown facility that you referenced, is that the gallery mall?
No, it is not. It is a Life Storage Facility over on Industrial Drive.
Industrial Drive, okay.
That's what you showed on your plan.
This might, I think this was submitted when they did the first one and they rescinded.
I think it's a mistake that you changed that over.
Okay.
Location plan. That's probably the last one.
Okay.
Oh, okay. I have Meyer Lane over here, but-
This one says Meyer Lane.
The map says, oh, there it is, yeah.
Shows that in your previous facility.
That must be, yeah, I must have an updated drawing then that you have.
Thank you for providing the location.
Yes, perfect. All right, I missed that one, but that's okay. Rick, go ahead.
Two things. First, more substantive, that's in response to Dennis's deferral to me on the bonding issue. As Dennis said, there is a bonding provision specifically in your code with respect to wireless. He's suggesting whether or not you want to consider an analogous bonding requirement for the solar. Simply because it's not in the code specifically doesn't mean that you can't consider it. We had a previously, we had an issue a number of years ago with respect to, I think it was ITT or IIT. I can't remember what the name of it was. Where, over in Apple Hill, where there was an issue with respect to concern by the board of whether or not the application, although several wells were tested, whether or not when it's fully built out, it was going to impact wells off-site. And so you went ahead, this board went ahead and required bonding to be put in place in case, in fact, it did affect surrounding wells off-site afterwards. And you required that bond. That was challenged. We prevailed in the lower court. It was taken up on appeal and the appeals court said, yes, you have that general right under the right circumstances of health and safety to go ahead and require bonds if that's, is reasonably required under the circumstances. So my advice to you is that you have the power to do so, the plenary power to do so. And you should make a decision. You don't have to make it tonight, but you should consider whether or not you believe bonding is appropriate. And if so, in what amount? Dennis, I believe, could help you with respect to the amount of the bonding that may be appropriate under these circumstances. Secondly, just a comment that you need to make the GML 239 referrals for this project. And that's it.
They did in October? They did, this? We, we received, we did it and they received, we received them back, right? I have that the Orange County GPW returned it back on November 16th and the Orange County Department planning on December 10. This is based on the original application, but they didn't show up at the January meeting. And then they're putting back the same application, correct?
I, I-
Yeah, Kelly, yeah.
I know about the previous application.
It's based, we received the application back on October 30. But when we had the, when we had the meeting on January 2nd, no one showed up and Kelly, I don't know if you know who Kelly is?
Kelly, yes.
She drew it, but she said, she submitted the letter back again that they're going with the original submission.
That's where I, that's where I picked up on this is when it was revoked by us.
Right.
So that, before, when it was revoked, I have no idea what was filed or any of that information.
So being that it was revoked and now do we have to resubmit it again? We should resubmit it again? All right, so Dennis, you'll let Maria know? All right, so we will resubmit it. They have to respond back within 30 days. Board members, what kind of, we heard from Rick and Dennis. It's a type 2 action. Who wants to start first?
Yeah, a couple of questions. This is only for Life Storage as far as the energy generated. Is it going to supply any other buildings?
Uh, it's, so this is going to be a purely, a, it's a new connection we're doing called a Vider connection. So it's going to be for Life Storage, but it's going to be more of, the credit system is a little different. It's going to be more of a, if you think of it more of a production plant for Life Storage than it is just a, just a load side system. I'm sorry if I'm, if I'm talking some mumbo jumbo, yeah. But essentially, yes, it is providing energy for Life Storage.
Now, is any of the synergy going to be given back to the grid or sold to Orange and Rockland?
Anything that is, actually, 100% of it is going back to the grid. Life Storage will get a credit for theirs and then any access goes to the surrounding area.
Is that the standard thing that you have to do or is that?
Yes. That is standard for a grid tie system, not for, like, for example-
It died, just keep it that way.
For example, a battery backup system does not do that. So the grid tie system, they all backfeed into the grid. Any excess power goes to the grid and the, you know, people of the area. But Life Storage is credited first for that power.
Now, one more question. What are the approximate weights of these panels or the total weight of both of the panels?
I do not have the panel stacks in front of me. I apologize. But a panel is generally about 50 to 60 pounds. And, you know, the total weight, I mean, there's, I think there's, get my mod down here. You have 280 solar modules, so. It's, it's a significant weight, but we go through the building, you know, we go through, we have everything done by a building engineer to make sure all the roofs are spec'd prior to us even, you know, setting any panels up there.
Do you have any idea what the material of the roof is made of? I mean, as far as the beams, is it wood, is it steel?
They're all, the beams are all steel. They're steel beams. And obviously, the roof is a galvanized corrugated metal. So, but all, the main supports are all steel. In the, in these storage facilities specifically, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Sandy? Forgive my ignorance here. So just so that I understand, the, these panels are basically going to make it so that store, Life Storage has no electrical costs? Because it'll be credited back to them?
Yes, but this is not a 100% system. So there's going to be times when it won't, it won't produce enough for Life Storage to meet its, so if I give-
If it's cloudy or there's-
Yeah, yeah. You're going to have some bad months where it's not going to make enough to support the power of Life Storage.
What I'm trying to say, or what I'm trying to get at is that it's, it's not, it's not income, additional income. This isn't like-
No, no, this is not additional income for Life Storage. If it-
That's the best way I can put it.
The power company would be very mad if it was income. So they make, they make sure that it's not.
That's what I just, that's what I was getting at.
Yes, yes. Okay, I get where you're going now. Yes. So the credit-based system is not advantageous for Life Storage to have this as a solar farm, if you will.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at. Okay.
You will see, when you look, excuse me, you will see that when you look at the memo that we prepared and we gave to certify to, that if you are connected to the grid, there are certain requirements that it be inspected by the public utility and they're going to have to shut off on it. So when you take a look at that memo and you provide the certification on that, there'll be a number of things that are apropos to the discussion that the board's having now.
Utility has- Now, they do not in every case, however. It all depends on the utility and the installer doing the work as some utilities are more familiar with other installers and like, you know, newer installers may have more inspections than, you know, our company specifically, the utility, we have very good relations with utility companies and they, they do a few witness tests, but that's really about it. Yep.
Chris?
I believe you said it was a grid tie system, correct?
That's correct.
So there will be no onsite battery storage?
There will not, that's correct.
Does the customer ever have the ability to upgrade the system if they wanted to? To put onsite battery storage through your company?
They do, but at this time, the technology wouldn't be feasible for them.
Okay. And Maria, the only thing I'd like to see is the ESO referral. They leave an eight-foot wide access path on the roof between panels for, for access? Two four-foot paths.
Okay, this is-
PV S2?
Are you talking about in between the two arrays?
Yeah, it looks like it's, it's marked at four feet or eight, I guess it would be eight feet total.
Absolutely.
I can see the ESO referral, that they're okay with, that's an access.
Dennis, you'll-
You want eight feet of panel?
No, they, they're, I want to just check with our ESO. They're okay with that eight-foot access way that's on the drawing is sufficient for them.
Our drawing is showing eight feet between the two main arrays.
Okay. And access for who, for our ESOs?
Yeah, for our ESOs.
Would our ESOs?
Typically, no, but if a worker does get injured on the roof or some, during installation, maintenance, panel removal, inverter, inverter work, I just want to make sure our ESOs have, are comfortable with the working space.
Anything else? Rich?
I'm good.
It says that, you worker Kelly Wilson, her name is listed on here, I was getting a copy of it. So check with her, see if she got a copy of Dennis's memo. If not, reach out to the building department. Make sure they can send it out to you.
Will do, yes, absolutely.
So then you can read up on Dennis's memo. Dennis is going to reach out to our ESOs just to make sure about the roof access. You're going to, I guess, with the support of the beams on the, on the interior of the building, how do we go make sure that the weight of the structure?
Dennis has suggested that we put a condition in any resolution of approval that prior to building permit applicant, prior to building permit being issued, applicant must provide to the building department a stamped opinion from a structural engineer licensed in the state of New York that the building on which the solar facility is located is structurally appropriate or has been reinforced to be appropriate for the solar facility installed.
Thank you. You read my mind. Okay, so, um, so we're going to submit to the county again. So that's going to be a 30-day hearing. So we're looking at possibly, are we anywhere near for schedule of another public hearing on this? Or do we need more information from you, Dennis? Because I'm looking at the first meeting in April, maybe, because there'll be two public hearings over that night already?
That's your call. If you wanted to have it at that date, that would be the earliest date. But if you want to have the applicant submit that certification, if you review the metal, that you will comply with all those states or how do you comply?
Absolutely, all right.
Do you think four weeks, well, two weeks' time? All right.
I'm sorry, I misinterpreted. I thought, you know...
But understand this, if it's going to be on April 3rd and they authorize it April 3rd, you must have the materials in by the 20th or it's not going to be... It's going to be gathered.
Okay, I don't think that'll be a problem. I'll make sure... I'll let them know it needs to be in on 20th.
Okay. All right. I'm just thinking if the county, you know, department responds back by April 3rd, we wouldn't be able to make a decision on that night anyway. It would have to be carried to April 17th. So why don't we make the public hearing for April 17th so this... Everything gets cleared. You don't have to rush the next two weeks. It gives you four weeks just to get everything. You have any questions, you reach out to the building department or you reach out to Dennis.
Sure, we're fine with that.
All right, so what did I say, the 17th? All right, so I'll make a motion. What... When is Easter?
Twenty-something.
Hold on a second.
Twenty-first, I think?
When is Easter? When's Palm Sunday? When's Easter? Between the holidays?
Easter is the 21st.
All right, so we're in between, so... Well, everyone be here on the 17th?
Mm-hmm.
Not going away?
Yeah.
Neither.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we have a public hearing on April 17th for this application and request to the attorney to draft a resolution of approval.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. If you have any questions, you can always reach out to the building department. You or Kelly can get everything together.
All right.
All right?
Thank you, have a good night.
You're welcome. Have a good night. Sorry for the length of the meeting.
Oh.
Okay, we have one more application, and I apologize for all this, everyone, because we had that snow day in between. Okay. Ridge Realty. I'm going to ask a stupid question in a minute, but... Review and discuss revised plans submitted for proposed three-lot subdivision of parcel located 345 Ridge Road in Highland Hills. Said property is owned in the village and would retax maps to section 204, lot 1, lot 14.2. Give me one second. Okay. January 17th, we received response from Orange County Department of Planning. February 15th, we received a memo from H2M and NPNV, and the applicant submitted a short EAF on the 6th of February. Now, this proper name of this... Of the application is 345 Ridge Realty LLC. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
All right, so we just have to let Maria know in the future just to put 345 Ridge Realty on the paperwork so we're all the same. And John, go ahead and take it.
Okay. Good evening again. John Queenen from Lake and Tully, engineer for the app. We were before you in January where I presented a sketch plan for a three-lot subdivision located at a property at 345 Ridge Road. It's about a 12-acre parcel of property located just opposite of Owens Drive. We're proposing three single-family residential lots, and I had brought to you basically a sketch plat that had a configuration of driveways because there's a wetland here in the center of the property. So we had a configuration of driveways that had a shared driveway for lots 2 and 3. And at the time, the feedback that the board provided was that was the most ideal of situations. So we've come back now with a much more detailed plan set of a full design. We eliminated the shared driveway and have provided individual driveway cuts for all three lots, so they're all separate now. On top of that, cleaned up the application. We've submitted the EAF. We've put a lot more detail into the plans. We've done our site distances, our grading. We've located preliminary areas for wells and septics, et cetera. So we're basically back for you tonight with the new layout with all individual driveways and basically get the application rolling a little bit. I did provide this aerial just to get a glimpse of the overall area, what's going on, and see how this does kind of fit in with the general residential corridor here. What you have is you have here's Owens Drive, and this is Ridge Road. And you have lot 1 here that comes in, and a situated house. And then all of these houses are being proposed with a pool and a poolhouse with an accessory structure. So that is what these, I'll call them V-shaped structures are. That's a pool with a poolhouse. So we put that on the map to get that basically incorporated into this, hopefully the subdivision approval, so we don't have to come back with, you know, a large structure or whatever else. That's why we've shown those. We've tried to put that... That we felt were undeveloped and nothing impacting anyone else around. So this lot here, there's really nothing around in this location. This is the Ranana.
Ranana.
Ranana. So we have this one here. Lot number 2 extends up to this open area here in the back, and it's paralleled with this existing house that gets access from here and comes in the back. This house has a front this way and a rear this way. We've taken our house and slid it this way, so we're not looking at each other. And our front looks this way and our rear looks this way. And then in the back here, this house is looking this way and this way, and this is basically wooded, a wooded lot there, undeveloped. And then lot number 3 comes in. If you've been to the property, there's an existing driveway here that we'll utilize. We come up straight here. There was an existing house here that'll be removed as part of this application. It's a dilapidated structure. I don't even know if it's usable anymore. And we're proposing our house here, again, to parallel this house here with their pool and front yard and rear yard. So that's kind of how we've situated everything onto this parcel. We've checked all the site distances for all the driveways. We've designed them to the county standards. We have to go to the county public works department for a permit. And we're currently, right now, working on the wetland permitting and mitigation plans. And that's kind of still on a little bit of hold until we get a little firmer along in the process with this design. So that's pretty much been. I have your consultants' comments. They can go through them, but I don't really have... As you...
I just have a question real quick. You said each home is going to have a pool with a poolhouse?
Sure.
Are we talking in-ground pools, above-ground pools? In-ground pool?
Ground pool.
Okay.
Basically, it was purchased properties back...
So the house design is very specific. The... The... I've noticed footprint is different. Footprint matches the one that's just what they liked. And each of the houses will come with a poolhouse and a pool. So it'll be actually similar, probably something like that pool there, just with a house.
Okay. Dennis?
Hello?
Is there any mic to report?
We gave John our comments, so he has these, and he says no objection to anything. I'm really not going to focus on too much of it. I will mention a couple of items. One is that these are deep lots, and it's not unusual because of the wetlands in front. Number of the lots along there are configured in similar fashion, except for in this particular case, the center lot is deeper than the other lots as far as the setting of the home. And it could function similar to a flag lot with the front yard facing the backyard of another house from a life quality standpoint. We try to discourage that, but in these particular lots, something along those lines is required. We mentioned that, and I think that they're going to try to preserve the wooded area between those so as to prevent visual impacts from one house upon the other. If that's the case, the adherence to the disturbance lines is going to be important, and they'll have to show those. Also, as far as water and sewer, they're proposing individual onsite systems for water and for sewer. There is a wastewater line, I think, in the front of that... In front of that property, the forest main. I would not think that we would want a connection to the forest main, but since it is a property fronting on a road that has a forest main, there is a requirement in the code that anyone who fronts on a line... Fronts on a street that has water and sewer facilities in a village must connect unless it's waived. There may, in fact, there may be a desire to have a waiver here. And if the applicant does not wish to connect, that would be understandable, but I think they have to get the relief from the, I thought, from the water and sewer superintendent, but I believe also the village board. And we've noted that here in our report. So that's something the applicant would want to keep in mind as this proceeds so they don't get too far ahead before getting that waiver.
I just noticed it says that in case of a minor subdivision of less than five lots, you get 20% of the...
Yes, I put that down, and then I talked to Rick's office, and I may have been overly aggressive, in my opinion, there, and maybe it is the village board. So you might want to take a look at that for yourself, too. And I can have Rick weigh in, but it looks like it might be the village board. We did talk about a couple of details on the septic systems. Some of the... You noted some of the tests were performed, but I saw the dates, and I don't think necessarily that's... I don't know if that's this lot or the information wasn't given.
Yeah, we have a bunch of littler tests based on those results we've shipped and like around. We have to go back and...
Okay. Because right now, they have some deep test holes that are not in the location of where they're proposing the septic fields, and that can't be. But they'll need to be witnessed anyway at some point, so they can take care of that. We've given some comments, and I won't bore you at this hour, on stormwater, which I love, and I know you do, too. But the applicant can address those when he look at the plan. The shared driveway, just it was the board's recommendation. I don't particularly care for shared driveways either because they do create problems at the roadway with mailboxes, with garbage collection and that sort of thing, and perhaps conflicting movements in vehicles. So you asked that they separate, and they have. That doesn't... That does, though, create some more impact on the wetlands. But I think it's appropriate here as the board requested. We've given a number of other comments, and I'm not going to dwell on those unless the board has any questions or the applicant does.
You know, one thing that I wanted to mention is you did mention here that we needed that hundred-foot buffer from wetlands. So I didn't realize that. So we'll have to modify lot number 1 to get that hundred.
Yeah, I also... I had mentioned that myself.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else, Dennis?
That's all I have.
Just give me one second. Highway building fire. Okay. Okay, Jonathan?
On our memorandum of February 15th, item 1 is just going over the lot widths. I don't need to do that here. 2, the wetland, the house on lot 1 is 65 feet from the wetland edge. There's not a hard and fast rule that you must be 100 feet, but if you're less than 100, you have to justify and show that there isn't an alternative and so forth. So you can... So I said explore moving the house farther away. It'll just... I think it'll make it easier in general. There are landscaping standards for subdivisions that I've listed. Basically, we need to know what trees are coming out and their dimensions, you know, tree removal plan, and it's in ridge preservation because the site's about 800 feet in elevation, and you'll need to minimize visibility of roofs and windows and justify removals of any healthy trees, eight inches or greater. And I was curious about the unusual shape of those pool areas. I'd never seen those sort of triangle wedge-shaped pool areas, but you've explained that...
What will happen is the pool will have to pass.
Okay. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Rick?
I have three things.
Thing 1. We received a short EAF form. A couple of things on that. 1, the Orange County Planning Department said it did not receive the EAF and said it would issue a report upon receipt of the EAF. So I guess Dennis, if you could, make sure that Maria sends over the EAF to the planning department. I believe the board can declare its intent to be lead agency and also type the action as unlisted, and we will prepare a Part 2 for the EAF for the board. And thirdly, that this is going to require a freshwater wetland permit, which requires a public hearing itself. Usually, we try to coordinate the public hearing for such things as a wetland permit with the public hearing that you're going to have on the subdivision itself. So you should go ahead and make an application for that freshwater wetlands permit so we can move forward with that. And that's it.
Thank you. Chris? Thoughts, concerns, questions?
Nothing right now.
Rich?
I'm good.
Robert?
It says that a waiver can be granted, you know, about the connections, the sewer and the water that exist. It's a financial burden. What would qualify financial burden? I mean, is there a set amount or a criteria?
Well, that's a decision.
I'm sorry. I can't.
I am of the opinion that this board cannot waive that, and therefore, that's a board of trustees determination because it really deals ultimately with the water and sewer systems themselves, which the board of trustees should be making upon criteria that's important to them. So I believe that if they do not want to hook up to municipal water and sewer as required, then an exemption is needed by the board of trustees. And the board of trustees, I would suggest a condition for any resolution of approval here, that if they're not going to connect to municipal water and sewer, that they need to get an exemption from the board of trustees for that code requirement upon and listening to the advice and recommendation of the water and sewer superintendent. And they will determine what standard they want to apply with respect to the financial hardship.
Thank you. Just to clarify...
Okay.
There's no water, but there's sewer line?
There's sewer. A country crossing comes down.
That's right. Country crossing comes down there?
It comes from a country crossing and goes over to Highland Estates.
That's right. Okay. So you'll take care of that with the board of trustees, right? Okay. Robert, anything else?
No.
Sandy?
I see that these are six-bedroom homes. How large approximately are these homes going to be? Square footage, forget cubicle content.
Count it all? It's square footage, Mike.
I can't.
Although then make them into account at a later date in respect to any ARB.
Correct. But I... Just because of the septic, I'd like to know how... About how... I know they're six bedrooms, but I'd like to know the size if possible.
About, I'd say 4,000 square foot. Two-story? Maybe everyone in New York has to take solid geometry.
You can have a basement, too?
Two-stores with a basement.
Two-story with a basement.
Like, that's what it sounds like.
So 4,000...
4,000 square feet.
Then another 4, then another 4.
That's right.
Okay. And that's 12.
It is 12.
Okay. All right. Sorry. Then on lots 2, there's an existing well that you said you're going to dispose of?
Yes, the property actually has an existing well. It's a one-time... It was...
I think what the history is...
But there's a... There was an existing drilled well here for their structure here, and then there's a dirt road that goes over the back here, and it's a well with an actual water storage tank. So all of that we removed, abandoned.
And the wells just get...
The wells get abandoned as per AWWA American, one of our association standards. They cut them and cap them off and fill them with...
Okay. All right, that's all I have right there. Thanks. Okay, I'm good for right now.
Okay.
So Rick, Rick mentioned that I'm... I'll make a motion to order with our intent to be lead agency. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
There's no water.
There's no water, but there's sewer line?
There's sewer. Uh, Country Crossing comes down.
That's right, Country, Country Crossing comes down there?
Uh, it comes from Country Crossing and goes over to Highland Estates.
That's right, okay. So, you'll take care of that with the tru- board of trustees, right? So, okay. Robert, anything else?
No.
Sandy?
Um, I see that these are six-bedroom ha- homes. How large approximately are these homes gonna be? Square footage, forget cubicle content.
You got it all. This, this is roughly like-
I can't.
Although then make them into account at a later date with respect to any ARB.
Correct.
But I, just because of the septic, I'd like to know how, about how, I know they're six bedrooms, but I'd like to know the size if possible.
About, I would say 4,000 square foot. Two-story? I think everyone in New York has to take solid geometry.
You can have a basement, too?
Two-stores with a basement.
Two-story with a basement.
Like, that's what it sounds like.
So, 4,000?
4,000 square feet.
Then another four, then another four.
That's right.
Okay. And that's 12?
It is 12.
Okay. All right, um- Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
We're a constructor. Um, then on lots 2, there's an existing well that you said you're gonna dispose of?
Yes, the property actually has two existing wells. At one time, it was, it was pumping water.
I, I think it, what the history is.
But there's a, there was an existing drilled well here for their, their structure here, and then there's a dirt road that goes over to back here, and there's a well with an actual water storage tank, kind of set of buildings. So, all of that we removed, abandoned.
And the wells just get-
The wells just get abandoned, uh, per, um, A W W A American, uh, standard, basically. You cut them and cap them off and fill them with, uh, concrete.
All right, that's all I have right now. Thanks. Okay, I'm good for right now. I'm-
Okay.
So, Rick, um, Rick mentioned that I'm, I'll make a motion to order, with our intent to be lead agency. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Um, I'll make a motion to clear this, uh, type the, uh, unlisted action. Do I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? You're gonna work on a freshwater permit? You're gonna reach out to-
Uh, can I ask a question about that? Sorry. All of a sudden, it works. Ask a question about that. I know you have to go for a wetlands permit here. Uh, whose other jurisdiction is it?
Army Corps.
It's Army?
Yes.
And, okay.
Okay, it works. It scared me half to death. All right. So, you're gonna work on the Army Corps engineer, the freshwater permit, um-
And the board of trustees.
The board of trustees. That's what you're gonna work on. And you're gonna, once we get closer to everything with ARB, you're gonna-
Yep.
Square footage, cubicle foot, whatever you wanna figure out. So, so the those four, is it gonna cover four? They, we can do, we can do it as a resolution. Okay, no, I would like it for four, but I just thought- It's up to the applicant, I guess, to request.
I would put-
I would, the, a condition in the resolution, if we needed to at that time, because it already hadn't been determined. But they can apply to the board of trustees now and add for an exemption. If they get that before it's time for your resolution, then we don't need that, obviously, as a condition.
So, it's up to the applicant before or after, however he wants to-
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, do a wetland permit application. You have to have that before we can really go forward, so I'll do that and the board trustees at the same time.
Okay. Rick, I covered everything that I needed to do with the agency in type.
Yes.
Okay. Everyone, you're good? Anything else from us?
I'm good, and we, you did the county referrals at 239 already?
We did, but they said that they didn't receive the EAF, which is surprising, but, um, so we'll just go ahead and-
Well, let me send you the, Dennis had a comment on the EAF, so let me send you the revised one. I'll list, I'll, I'll fix that one and then-
I'll make a note for that for Maria on the set.
Correct. Yeah, I'll get that, I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay. All right, John, you're good to go?
Very good. Thank you.
Anything from the consultants we need to discuss? Good. I'm off for a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, for putting up-